Good afternoon, and we're here to resume our budget hearings with the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service. Bill?
Yes, I'll start off here.
Again, give your title, please.
Yeah, Bill Urbannick, City Council Budget Director. The Human Resources and Civil Service Division enables the city of Pittsburgh to meet its initiatives by providing skills and expertise in the areas that are imperative to successful business operation. The department is committed to developing a highly functioning workforce while respecting individual dignity, promoting and celebrating a diverse population, upholding applicable laws and regulations, and molding a positive corporate culture. The 2020 budgetary highlights for the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service, the total budget is $40,688,000. That's a decrease of $14,338,000 or 26.6%. The total departmental budget, not including healthcare benefits, summer youth employment, is $7,241,000, a decrease of $1,098,000 or 13%. Total full-time positions will stay the same at 37, same as the past two years. After three years of major overhauls of the department, there are only two minor change proposed for 2020. One of three payroll coordinators was removed and replaced with a talent acquisition coordinator. The difference is $2,190. Part-time wellness guru also eliminated, a part-time human resource specialist was added, savings of $8,300. Non-salary, non-department, non-benefit classes, subclasses changed across 13 lines, total reduction of $481,000. Highlights include: professional services were decreased by $268,000; payroll processing was decreased by $146,000; operation supplies decreased by $74,000; and employment-related increase by $30,000. Machinery and equipment was also decreased by approximately $15,000. Under the Department of Human Resources, they also administer the health care and benefits across all of the departments, even those who have health care and benefits budgeted within their departments. What we have here is the citywide budget for health care and benefits shown on this flip side of the page I gave. And you can see the health insurance cost from 2019 to 2020 went from $42,400,000 to That's a $2 million change or 4.7% decrease. Other insurance benefits increased by 0.6%. Retiree health insurance also saw $1,358,000 decrease or 5.5%. Social Security went up $763,000 for an increase of 8.3%. Unemployment compensation stayed the same. Medical workers' compensation citywide, $4.296 million to $4.366 million, a $69,000 increase or 1.6%. Indemnity workers' compensation saw a decrease of $185,000 or negative 1.6%, sort of offsetting each other there. Legal workers' compensation also saw a slight decline of only $2,300. Workers' compensation settlements will stay the same at $80,000 in '19 and '20. Workers' compensation, the fees, we pay $36,000 decrease or approximately 11%. Personal leave buyback is down $22,000. And retirement severance was eliminated, $1.2 million savings. So overall, the total for personnel employee benefits for the health care, workers' compensation, and other insurance was actually decreased by $4 million from $100,759,000 to $96,722,000. The capital and community development block grant budgets for Department of Human Resources and Civil Service, neighborhood employment centers, stays the same at $150,000. Pittsburgh Employment Program also stays the same at $150,000. Department of Human Resources also has several trust funds and agency funds. The JTPA, WIA, Workforce Investment Pittsburgh Partnership, projected beginning balance is $5,890,000. Anticipated revenue for 2020, $3,585,000. That's the same as the last four years. Position changes within the Pittsburgh Partnership Trust Fund. One youth program supervisor was added at a cost of $69,285. Workers' Compensation Commutations Trust Fund, $5,200,000. Workers' Compensation Medical Payment Trust Fund, $348,000. And our VIBA accounts for health insurance, the current balance is $27 million. And the workers' compensation VIBA account is at $24,600,000. And that's what I have, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And Janet, would you please give your name and title, and also your staff members that are here? You three have the floor right now. Oh, and we have Councilman Bruce Kraus at the table. We should have more council members coming to the table soon. Thank you.
Janet Manuel, Director of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Paula Callerman, Senior Manager, Secretary and Chief Examiner to the Civil Service Commission.
Deidra Cochrane, Senior Manager for Pittsburgh Partnership.
Okay.
And so, just as it has been read about the highlights of the Department of HR and Civil Service budget, you know, since me joining the city in 2017, you know, I took the charge given by the mayor as well as by the city council to me to really be prudent and conservative with the money. And so, as you can see, as it was read earlier, we have made great progress, and we have also made great progress in savings, but also been able to present for the benefit of all of our employees for the city of Pittsburgh, a very well-balanced health and wellness benefit plan, just the continuation of moderate increases per year for non-union as well as those that are unionized. And then also from a development standpoint, particularly for the staff within the Department of HR and Civil Service, there was a slight increase, as it was stated earlier, and that is due to the fact that a lot of them are continuing their education, which I am very proud of that accomplishment. Some are pursuing their bachelor's degree, their master's degree, as well as getting their certification to prove their skill and expertise in the field of human resources. One of the key things that you will denote under salary and wages, you know, for the year 2020, it happens probably every five years, there will be a 27th pay period for the city of Pittsburgh in the year 2020. And as denoted, it will cost the city approximately about $8 million for that additional pay period that will be paid out in 2020. One of the nice things that was done by Mr. Urbannick, as well as the Department of OMB, is that they did analyze under each respective department what that 27th pay period will actually cost per department. This is a process that cannot be, you know, avoided by the city. It just happens every five years depending on when our respective pay dates lie. And 2020 will ensure that all of us receive 27 pay periods. In regards to benefits, absolutely, there's been great progress in that. We've had some great acknowledgements. Most recently, we were the first city to participate in the Heart of a Hero Challenge, as well as have a documentary mentioned about that. And one of our best rewards is that we just most recently been recognized by the American Heart Association, and we were awarded the Bronze Award for having a healthy lifestyle atmosphere for our employees. So that is a great accomplishment. And when you have those type of rewards and acknowledgements, that will have a positive impact on your cost for health and benefits. And so, you know, the renewal premium has been the lowest it has been in quite some time for the city of Pittsburgh. Historically, it's been over 5%. It was 2.7% for the year 2020. So we're very pleased with the progress that we're making in the Department of HR and Civil Service. When you look at the professional services, we have had some reallocation of wellness funds, but we also are going to move forward with what was introduced earlier, and respectfully, city council passed. The fire barrier study, so we're anxiously awaiting for those results to make sure that we improve our hiring process for the fire department. When it comes to respective other services, you know, due to the amount of employees that we are hiring per year, which I'm very pleased to say that we are hiring more per year, and therefore, we had to ask for the increase for additional monies for our background checks. In regards to supplies, we definitely are having a new ID printer implementation, as well as having some of our additional monies reallocated from the respective supply budget line item. There are no changes to the Learn and Earn program, but what I will do is pause at this moment and just have Paula speak to the fact of how many projected hiring classes will be specifically for public safety. I know that that is of concern for city council. And then after Paula speaks to that, I will ask Deidra to speak to the fact of what accomplishments we have made for the Learn and Earn program, which is the summer hiring program.
Okay, for public safety, for police classes, the mayor is committed to three police classes for 2020, depending on the numbers, of course, as we proceed through the year. One fire class. And great news is EMS is approaching full staffing, which is fabulous news, and so we will just work with them to maintain that as needed, put, you know, higher paramedics and EMTs.
And before Deidra speaks, you know, that is, you know, when I started in 2017, that was of concern from the mayoral administration side as well as the city council side. So it is nice to sit before you. Here we are, three years later, to let you know that I took that charge very seriously, have a great team to work with. They took that charge very seriously, and I think the numbers that have been spoken here today speaks for itself of the progress and work that has been done within the Department of Human Resource and Civil Service.
Okay. For the Learn and Earn program, the Pittsburgh Partnership's role is to determine eligibility of all applications, city and county. And we reviewed, my staff reviewed, 2,845 applications, and we served 1,394 city youth. But that's one reason that we are asking for that additional staff person is because we do review so many, and there is so much work that goes into the program, and we just didn't have enough staff.
And how many youth was it?
We've served 1,394.
Okay.
It was a total of 2,439, but that included both city and county, but for city youth, it was 1,394.
Okay, and what was the...
The total number of applications reviewed?
Yes.
That was 2,845. A lot of applications.
And the 1,394 was city residents?
Those are eligible city residents, yes.
Okay, Mr. Kraus.
Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Always good. I would start out with a comment, just say thank you for running such an effective and diligent department. You, you know, you're the heartbeat of the city, right? We are our employees, right? And so, you handle and process and care for how many 3,000?
There's over 3,500.
So you have a lot on your plate.
Yes.
And we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
First and foremost, I want to say that.
Sure.
In terms of open enrollment right now?
Yes.
Are you seeing a big shift now that sort of the, I hate to use the word divorce, now that the dispute between insurers and medical suppliers has been settled? Are you seeing, is that adding to your workload, I guess is what I'm getting to? Are you seeing a lot of shifting?
No, actually not. And just a couple of weeks ago, the Department of HR and Civil Service, we had our end-of-the-year meetings with our respective health carriers. And believe it or not, for those that are actually enrolled in the medical premiums, there is like divided into thirds. So even with the settlement between the respective local carriers, we have not seen a decrease in enrollment or a vast amount of change in who is enrolling in each respective carrier. I will definitely know the numbers more solidified once everything is closed out by the end of this month, but as of this moment, there's not that much of a difference.
And the end of open enrollment is the 16th?
Well, the end of open enrollment, for 2020 open enrollment, it concluded November 15th. And so, we are now, Department of HR and Civil Service is now in the process of working with all the respective medical carriers, so that way, all the new medical cars can be distributed to our employees during the month of January, so that way, they can, there's no disruption in their service if they need to see or seek medical attention.
Okay, good, okay, understood. The mayor had his budget hearing yesterday, too. He spoke about bringing on the three new classes this year and the numbers of police officers that we have now, and I think it was at about 985, if I'm presently employed?
Present employed, yes, that is correct.
Right. So it's conceivable, if we were to stay on track, that we could break 1,000 officers in 2020.
Absolutely.
The first time in the 12 years I've been here. I think we were about eight something when I started, I think.
Seven hundreds to the, yeah, low eight hundreds.
Yeah.
You are correct.
Yeah, so that is really encouraging news, too.
Yes, and so, when you see that progress of having the opportunity to have over 1,000 police officers hired, over, you know, almost 700 firefighters, and then for the first time in quite some time to have almost a full staff, close to a full staff for EMS, that's just great progress.
Yeah. The mayor's definitely committed to sort of reorganizing our policing style and strategy. He talks openly, he did yesterday, but I've heard him speak a number of times about adding a new zone that would help to sort of alleviate the pressure of, hi, Councilwoman, sort of alleviate the pressure that are on certain neighborhoods at certain times of the week. And so, that's definitely encouraging to hear. Can I be you?
I said, I knew you wanted to be me.
I've always wanted to be you. Secretly, I've always wanted to be you. So that is encouraged. We have a very healthy, on the road to a very healthy public safety department, and I know that's of great concern to everyone that we represent, and that's really good news. That's really encouraging. To see, there was one other thing I had for you, and it kind of has left my, oh, I know what it is. It was really more a compliment of your leadership style throughout the department and how you take a holistic approach to health and wellness, which is incredibly important to me in how I view. Wellness is not just physical in nature, it's spiritual and mental and emotional.
Correct.
And there's always been, under your leadership and your team's leadership, there's always been a holistic approach to health and wellness, and it hasn't gone unnoticed, and we appreciate.
Thank you.
I appreciate your approach. I think it's made a huge difference in the department.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and that helped, and that also helped us get the recognition of the Bronze Award from the American Heart Association. So it is, it's the mind, body, soul, and spirit. And so, having our employees be able to do different activities so that way, they can earn their respective wellness points, it does matter. So we encourage them to do community service. We encourage them to volunteer their time with the mayor's mentor program, being, you know, going out and partnering with Pittsburgh Public Schools and being that respective mentor to the youth, whether it's with the kindergarteners or the first graders reading the books, or just doing some after-school work with them. But then also encouraging them to get involved with the Learn and Earn program as well, as well as the internship program. So it all blends in, and it all makes for a better employee and for a better city.
It does, because without our employees, we're brick and mortar, basically, right?
Yeah.
Right? And we want to, certainly, we want to exceed beyond that, and it's our people that make us.
Correct. And one of the other key things that we've added in for the health and wellness is that we've folded into, we folded in the families of our employees. So we recognize and know that they have a life outside of just working for the city of Pittsburgh.
What?
Yes, they do.
No one told me.
And so, when, you know, so take, for example, our Health and Wellness Festival that we had this year. We had it at Pitz Conservatory, which was an all-day event, which included, you know, admission for them to take their family to go and see the butterfly display, and just go see, you know, the respective displays at Pitz Conservatory. And the feedback that I received directly from the employees and their family members is that we just made it a family day for them. We infused the health and wellness piece into it, but it really was that family day for them as well. And so, they thank the city of Pittsburgh, the mayor, they thank city council for us implementing something like that, because there are times that employers, unfortunately, tend to forget that people do have lives outside of work. And so, to be able to infuse that into health and wellness, as well as the benefit structure, that's a great message to deliver.
Yeah, and that brings the conversation back full circle again to the holistic approach, right?
Absolutely.
Whether at work or at home, or a combination of the both. Intersectionality is a very big word today, you know? And it is, it's understanding, appreciating, and compensating for the intersectionality of employees in both work and home. And you guys do a wonderful job of that.
Sure.
Just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You have more work, more work. Wait for 2020.
Okay, Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. So I want to thank you all for your work that you do in the city, and I just heard you mention more work, more work, and I just want to put a little plug in there saying that I think some of your staff needs a little bit less work, because I saw them setting up several times for different events downstairs, and that's not their responsibility. So I just want to put that out there, that I think that that's a job for the, for GPW. So I just want to make sure I mention that. And I'm not going to say names, but I saw them more than once. But I just think that the Learn and Earn program, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're still working on it, one for our district, we're trying to find a conduit, a financial conduit for it, and that has been the biggest challenge that we've had. Other than that, I think that we'll be moving along pretty soon, because I know the porters plan on opening in 20, spring of 2020. So if they open their place in spring of 2020, hopefully, we'll have a place for the employment center, one way or the other, and they do have a nonprofit as well, so. That's it. Thank you very much for all your work.
Absolutely, and you have the commitment from us, again, to continue to work with you and make sure that that NEC is open. And Deidra and I were speaking about that prior to coming to the table, and making sure that we keep everything together.
And I heard others asking questions about the staffing for police and staffing for the medics, and you're going to be a full complement of medics?
Right, well, we are close. We will not say full, we will say very close.
But I did hear you only say one class for firefighters. Is there a reason for only one class?
So to my knowledge, it's just simply the budgetary. They typically, according to budget, they typically lose around to, you know, retirement, maybe around 30, 32 per year, and so, we usually have a class of 32 each year to fulfill.
So I'll be honest, that's a concern, and the other concern I have is that we're talking about opening additional police zones up, and we're having three classes next year, but in the meantime, will, how will those, how will they be staffed is a concern to me. I want to make sure we're not pulling officers from zones to make sure that we're taking care, to try to create another zone, and that we're actually giving the officers the resources and tools that they need to do their jobs as well. And that doesn't mean exhausting them or pulling them from every different place.
I can tell you the class that we're processing right now, we're already in process for a March class. So the first one in 2020 will be hired into the academy in March.
And how many officers are we at now? Did you, you said...
A little bit over 900.
Over 900?
Mm-hmm.
But they at one point were like 1,200 or something?
No, they've never been to this amount. It's been, well, nuts.
That's when you, yes, you were, you were in the, you were at 1,200, but that was when you went into Act 47.
Correct.
So let me make sure I make that clear.
Yeah.
One time, we had 1,800.
Yeah, is that right? Well, I hate to say it, but I mean, the city has changed. I mean, there's actually more...
We were given additional police officers during the Clinton administration through the COPS program.
The 25 or something, right?
No, it was significant. We had like 200 additional officers as a result of that program. That grant funding went away, and we were stuck having to pay that amount of money without an increase in taxes. And that was one of the reasons why we sort of dwindled into financial problems. Yeah, and that would be actually a question I would have regarding the retirements, since you brought up the retirement portion of this, is that we had an early retirement program in the 90s, and we did, and I think 1996, we lost a bunch of officers as a result of that, but we had a bunch hired on between 96 and 98. And that's what I'm curious about, because that's been the warning of the FOP has been, oh, all those people that are retired. Have we gotten through the majority of those people? That would be the question I would have regarding the retirements to help to answer...
Where are we with retirements for the officers?
Right, to help me answer that question is, you know, bring on 120.
Because I'll be honest with you, because we keep bringing classes on, but my numbers really aren't going up in my zones. I mean, I know that Zone 6, they had seven officers retire, no, 11 officers retire, and they bought on seven. So we're still short officers. So it sounds great to say that we're at these numbers, but I want to make sure my zone is staffed, as if we add good numbers, so. And I'd like to know what percentage is in the headquarters.
We can follow up with that and let you know, absolutely. In regards to the retirement, I mean, that is being taken care of. You know, it's, when you deal with respective retirement, depending on respective ages for those that do retire, there are some that have the Medicare supplement plans, and then they also have the regular retirement plan. So when you encompass those two respective areas, it is covering and making sure that everyone is being supplied sufficiently from a retirement medical benefit plan.
But they don't have social security.
No, that's, that is correct, but it's Medicare. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm done.
I'm sorry. I was just making that one correction.
Thank you, thank you all for your...
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I can take a little credit for the decreases here, too.
Absolutely. We will give, we will give Councilwoman Harris, affectionately known to us as Aunt Darlene, who has been working with the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service since they started in 2017, and so, yes, we do thank you for your tough questions that you have asked me in the back prior to me coming to the table at city council, which is really prepped me. I appreciate you really grilling me, for lack of a better word, because it's really helped me be prepared to come to the table and have the answers to the questions before they're asked.
She said they can't possibly be as bad as you. No, just kidding.
I just, I just have that motherly way to me.
So now, everyone now knows, everyone now knows how you are affectionately called Aunt Darlene.
Yes, she does. She calls me.
Not on TV. So we do...
We're actually friends.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are. Um, what did I want to ask? Oh, the police. What are the numbers right now? Cause I, I-
What we currently have?
Yeah, I, I think they're-
There's a little bit over 900. I don't know the exact number. I can get the exact number, but it's a little bit over 900.
That are not on disability and that are on the streets and signed, sealed, and delivered. They're not still in classes or working, um, with a partner where they're still learning.
Okay.
I guess, it wasn't too long ago, I just asked that question, and we were still lower.
Okay.
I just hope this contract goes okay because we have a lot that can retire, too. So I'm keeping our fingers crossed. And, and really, uh, crime isn't going away. So we definitely need our officers, our firefighters.
Okay.
Our paramedics, and I'm glad we're really getting up to the numbers with our paramedics. We were really worrying there for a while. Uh, and, um, when we talked about public safety, we didn't say animal care and control.
No, we did not. Um, but that is considered under, they are under public safety. But in regards to their hiring needs, it, it is, um, focused on just as well as, as all positions, not just public safety. All 19 departments that have hiring needs are serviced and supported by this department, and, and that's the beauty of us having the opportunity to have that talent acquisition coordinator as we swap roles and positions because we recognize that recruiting is a key focus for us.
And this, this is the third year that we're trying to have one whole, whole, um, uh, new animal care and control officer, which I think is needed with everything that is, you know, happening uh, in the field of animals. So, um, I want to thank you all for what you do. Uh, with, I know what it was, with the children program. It looks like we have 57 more county than we have city.
Yes.
Okay. Um, how can we bring that number up because it's right here in the city? Do we have an advertisement problem? Are we going through the Pittsburgh Public Schools to make sure they know?
Yes, we do, and we actually, um, have a contract with Goodwill Industries to do recruitment. Um, although the city is not really, our role is not recruiting, we do assist, partner for work with recruitment. And we've already started to work on next year's recruitment already now.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just hope that number comes up in the city.
And I think that having a new, another staff person to assist will actually aid in that also because then we have, um, more people working on it and more, um, new ideas and-
Have, have we gone out to Pittsburgh Public Schools? Have they?
Yes, we have. Yes, ma'am, every year.
I mean, not go out to each school, but keep reminding them to-
Participate, yes. And we have applications in all schools.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, I know there's another group coming. Are we taking?
Carnegie Libraries.
Yeah, Carnegie Libraries is going to be next.
Okay. Okay, Carnegie Library.
All right, all right. City Council, thank you again.
Thank you.
We wish all of you a happy holiday season. Aunt Darlene, thank you so much for your leadership, for your guidance for the Department of H.R. and Civil Service.
Thank you.
And, um, we'll see you on Monday.
And I wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy New Year and any other holidays that you might have in between.
All right. Thank you. Take care.
Bye, thanks.
Okay, uh, is Carnegie Libraries, okay, uh, is under Mr. Kraus, so I will remove from this seat and trade you.
I'll just begin, I guess.
Uh, well, let's give them a chance to have a seat. Mary Frances, how nice to see you. Carlin, welcome. Okay, all right.
Can I be Bruce Kraus now? I could be Darlene Harris, why not? What the hell? Okay, welcome. So, yeah, so here we go with our, our annual, uh, hearing for the Carnegie Library. And so we will begin with a brief overview from, uh, our Budget Director, Bill Urbannick, and then we'll introduce our Executive Director and, uh, and take her opening statement, and we'll probably have some questions and things.
Sounds like fun.
That, it's always fun.
Of course.
Thank you. Okay, Bill, thanks.
Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh was established as a public trust in 1895. Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh serves the citizens of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County with a distinguished history of leadership among the counties, uh, the country's greatest libraries. Through its, uh, 19 neighborhood locations, including Main Library and the Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped, Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh is the region's most visited asset.
Could you say that again, please?
Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh is the region's most visited asset.
And that exceeds Pirate Game, Penguin Games, and Steeler Games.
2.6 million visitors annually.
Yeah.
Each year, the library provides valuable resources, programs, classes, and training opportunities that engage the community in literacy and lifelong learning. The city retains ownership of 10 of the 19 existing libraries, as well as a number of the closed libraries.
Oh, thank you.
Carnegie Library pays the, uh, uh, the, the city pays the library $40,000 a year per the original 1890s agreement. This is reflected as an expenditure within the Finance Department. The city collects the, uh, .25 mil real estate tax on behalf of the library. The 2020 budget has $4,185 of revenue budget as library tax administrative fees, up from $100 from 2019, but down 90% from 2018. The city sometimes acts as a pass-through, uh, for library grants, such as the $750,000 state grant received in November uh, for the library for the blind and physically handicapped. Uh, these grants are not reflected in either the operating or capital budget, but they are something that we vote on.
Right, that is true. Hi, Mary Frances, welcome.
I, I've just introduced myself. I'm Mary Frances Cooper. I'm President and Director of Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, and-
Carlin.
Carlin Voss with the, also with Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, Director of External and Government Relations.
And I actually wanted to just follow up on the previous, um, group. Uh, the Learn and Earn Program is something that's very important to the libraries. Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh serves as a place where the kids can come and apply to participate in the program. And we hire about 15, uh, young people in the summer who work in our libraries around the county, so, or around the city. So it's really, um, something that we, uh, are very engaged with and feel is really important.
And the number one usage of the computer system in Carnegie Library is to serve what function?
Well, it's a lot of job seekers.
A lot of job seekers, exactly, right.
Yeah, so there, so we use those computers for the Learn and Earn. So I just wanted to, um, highlight a few, um, things that are going on. First of all, as you know, we've been working since 2002 to update, renovate, or replace the libraries in the, um, city. Uh, right now, the Mount Washington Library is closed, but amazing work is going on there. We have really, it's on, it's on, um, good track. Um, we've replaced the roof. We're working, um, to redo the interior. We will be putting, uh, elevator on the back. As you know, it's historic structure. It has been a little bit challenging to figure out how to make it ADA compliant, but we will do so. It will be air-conditioned. We'll have a lovely new children's department, um, and we expect that it will be open next summer. So that's-
On track.
We're on track with that. Um, the other, uh, capital project that we are looking at is the Downtown Library. Downtown Library in Smithfield Street, um, is in a rented facility. We were at the end of our lease, and if you've ever been there, you know it is very small. It's tightly packed. There's a lot of people who come through that, 1,000 people a day come visit that location.
I didn't realize it was that high.
It's that high.
Yeah.
And so we wanted to expand it, and so we will be going, um, instead of the lower level and the main level, we're going to the main level and the second floor. That will give us about 20,000 square feet, up from 12.5. Um, unfortunately, it does mean that we will be closed downtown, probably starting early in 2020. Um, but because of the terms of the lease, we want to be back in in December because that's when we have to start paying the, the additional rent. Um, but we are working very collaboratively with our friends at the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership and others to figure out how we can, um, have some temporary or pop-up services. We are looking at having a little place, uh, directly across the street where people can come in and pick up holds and browse for new books, and we're looking at ways we can engage, um, the community with computers and other services throughout downtown. And then you, uh, just mentioned that we had the Keystone Grant in November. That's for the Library for the Blind. We are going to be renovating that facility on Baum Boulevard. It is a statewide service that we provide there, but we do provide a lot of onsite, um, support for, um, people who, um, live in the city, who qualify for the city services. And we just want to make sure that we have a good space for them to come. So those are our capital projects that we've got going on.
That all.
Those are, those are the capital projects.
We do rock and roll.
We do, we do. So just to, to, you know, within our strategic plan, uh, we've been really looking at ways to connect with our community, and we have some grants. We always are on the lookout for grants, uh, private funds that can help us transform our services. So just going to highlight a few of those. One, we're calling CLP Connects, and this is a, a grant that's really helping us understand how the people in our community actually use technology and how the library can engage with them through. Everybody's got a smartphone. How are they using that to find information, um, to get content? And how can the library be a part of the services that they look at as they look at their smartphone or other devices? So that's one that we're working on. Um, we've got another grant that's called Building a Vibrant Democracy Um, through Greater Understanding of the First Amendment, and that is going to be about, I mean, we have a number of things that are facing us with our democracy in 2020. One is, um, the election. The other is the census. Um, and we do have some interest in also some First Amendment issues and making sure that people know that there is a freedom of expression and, um, freedom of speech and, um, how the, the, the press feeds into that. So this is a project that's going to help with that sort of civic engagement, civic democracy within our community through the library. Um, we have the Library Card Challenge, which is actually something that we're doing with the city and the Pittsburgh Public Schools. This is trying to get every, every school child to have a library card, but not only that, to be able to actually use it meaningfully. It's easy enough to go in and give kids library cards, but you want them to come to the library. And so in connection with that, we actually have, um, some funding to do a little bit of marketing studies, figure out how we can help families understand the value of using the library to support their child's schoolwork. Um, and we're pretty excited about that one. Um, the Regional Asset District, which we will talk about a little more, they are a major funder, and they are celebrating their 25th anniversary, and so they get, had a grant program, um, that, uh, asked assets to, um, apply for, for, uh, opportunity to celebrate this anniversary. And so we put forward something called the Rad Pass, which means that what, what we're going to do is with your library card, you're going to be able to check out what we call experiences, tickets to the museum, or the symphony, or the opera. Um, we've got Pittsburgh Arts and Lectures involved, Kelly Strayhorn, New Haslet. We have, um, some others that are interested so that we have a software program that if they have tickets available, that they want to make available to communities, either, you know, a specific part of the city or everybody in the county. Um, you know, it's good to fill seats, and you can borrow them with your library card.
What a great idea.
Isn't that fun? So that, we will hope to be, uh, rolling that out in the summer, in the soft launch in the summer, and then in the fall, uh, more formally. And then, um, we also have a special grant to, to make the libraries a hub for volunteer-led adult learning programs. So what it is, is there's a lot of opportunities for learning online, and there's a lot of research that says that if you go online, and I am personally, uh, you know, done this myself, to take a class that's multiple sections, usually after the second section, it peters off. So this is a program that helps people who are interested in learning actually come together and support each other in that learning so that they are, are working together through a program and doing it together, and that way they will learn together and share what they learn. So we're really pretty excited about some of these programs that we're doing. This is on top of all of the work that we do with early literacy and connecting with the schools and the seniors and finding, meeting people where they are. So, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, Bill passed out a list of the, um, trustees of the Carnegie Library. I just wanted to recognize the service of Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilman Lavelle as, as trustees of the, of the library as well, too, and the work that they, they bring. I am, yeah, and I am as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and, and one more thing before we turn it over to members. Could you talk a little bit about the benefits the library taxes brought and some of the things that we have been able to accomplish since that has been, uh, put in place?
Absolutely, and I want to do that within the context of just making sure that anybody who's watching or listening understands how the library is funded. So, um, we always start by saying Andrew Carnegie did not endow Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. He gave money to build buildings, but he didn't feel people would value the library unless they paid for themselves. So the libraries always receive public support. Our major funder now is the Regional Asset District, which you're all familiar with, um, and that's about two-thirds of our funding. Um, the, the Regional Asset District has been in existence for 25 years, and we will be celebrating our 125th anniversary next year. So when we first started in the 1890s, it was the city that was funding the library. Somewhere in the middle of the 20th century, 1950s, the county started supporting Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh as well. So our- Well, Allegheny City was separate, and they got their funding separate until 1907, and, you know, that, that's a whole interesting, you know, you know the story of Allegheny City. It's really fascinating, and I could go down there. We could go down.
But we won't right now.
Yeah.
Okay?
Um, but anyway, and so when the regional asset came into, district came into being, then that was, our funding went on to the Regional Asset District and off the city and county. Um, the other source of funding that we have is the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that, um, money has gone up and down over the years. We did take a big hit 10 years ago, 2009, which was the, uh, Great Recession. That's when we were flat-funded by the Allegheny, the Rad, and we got a decrease of a couple million dollars from the, the, um, state. And that's when, um, actually the City Council gave us $600,000 for the 2010. You remember that?
That was the first year I was here, I think, first or second year.
And said, "We're going to give you one-time source of money, but you guys got to figure out a solution to your financial issues, and it's not eliminating locations in the city."
Right.
So we had the Public-Private Task Force and Sustainable Funding, and they looked at a whole bunch of options and identified the referendum, the library tax. So that's, we went, and that was successful. So we've been receiving that. It passed in 2011, so 2012. So it's been, what, eight years?
Eight years.
Yep.
Has it really been eight years?
It's been eight years. Um, what that has meant is that in every single neighborhood, we are now open six days a week. Prior to that, we were either closed on Fridays or Mondays. So every school day after school, we're open mornings because that's a really good time for preschoolers, um, and seniors and people who work alternative schedules to come. Um, we're open evenings for families and people who work, uh, traditional schedules. And, um, Saturdays, uh, we've opened two additional locations on Sundays, Allegheny and South Side, in addition to, um, Squirrel Hill and Main. We're out in the community, meeting people where they are. I mean, we feel that every, if everybody's paying this tax, they really need to get benefit from it. And you know this from being on the board. We are out trying to, you know, we visit early literacy centers, we visit all of the schools, we visit the senior centers, we visit community centers, we're at programs, um, partnerships with everybody that we can partner with so that we know that we're connecting with our community, uh, in, in the fullest way. Um, we've also incorporated through that, um, a very robust volunteer department because people really do want to contribute their library, to the library in a way that's meaningful to them. But I really and truly think that our efforts and, you know, some of these grants that I talked about, some of the renovations that we've done, the renovations are all private money that we raise, but the fact that we know we can operate them has enabled us to actually invest in them.
So can we back up there and just, I'm going to make that point a little more clear because sometimes there is confusion around, uh, the, the, uh, library referendum monies going to capital improvements, and, and that's- and they don't-
They don't.
Okay, yes, it was Teresa who had that question, okay? And they don't go to the capital improvements. Those are all, uh, actions that are taken by largely board members in, in fundraising and, and bringing-
Yeah, government grants and anywhere we can, but it's all, we raise money.
To do the capital improvements, and that the, the library referendum funds go strictly to the operations and improving the operations like you've just defined.
Yeah.
Being able to add staff and hours.
I finally stand corrected.
Councilwoman. But I, I want to make sure that that is real- But I want to make sure that that is really clear, that that is not where it goes and that the, because there's an enormous effort within the organization to seek external funds to do the capital improvements, and they are major undertakings, and they take a real form of dedication by, by the entire system to bring those funds and to do those renovations.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why we're talking to people all the time and trying to, you know, connect and interest them in the opportunities in their communities or for their communities.
Right, and the funds, they're raised through the library referendum, then give us the power to operate, which is wonderful.
Right, right, right.
Now that we have these great facilities, we can actually operate them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, that's, is, is that, Carolyn, did you have something you were going to offer up? I'm going to open it up. Do Councilwomen like to take the floor first?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the work in all the libraries. I mean, they are really in our area because we don't have a community center. I talk about this. The libraries are our centers for our kids, and I mean, the one in the West End, Sheridan, Mount Washington, and Beachview, all in my district, every one of them offers something to the kids in the communities and the people, the residents that live there. And I just want to thank you very much because they're constantly busy, constantly a hub, and so.
I saw you at Sheridan one time. I remember, I walked in and you were there at a meeting at the Sheridan Library, which is good to see.
Yeah, yeah. No, I've been in all of them for many meetings.
I know.
But probably the West End the most because that's where they have most of the meetings for the community group. But, but all of them at some point. But I, so I want to thank you for that. But I, the one thing I do want to ask is that, the one thing, did you just hear me say the Beachview Library is in my district? Okay, just want to make sure. But anyway.
I'm sure that's why it came out.
It's in my district. But anyway, the coding, preparing our workforce, our young folks for the, and people returning to work for what's coming here in Pittsburgh with the technology, you know, and everything that's growing so rapidly here in Pittsburgh. There's not a lot of free coding classes anywhere, and I'm wondering if, I've been asking the city to do them to, because what we do in our side of town is, I work, we partner with CMU, and they've actually done a really great job training our local officers who then in turn train our kids on computers. But they're officers, they're not, you know, computer people, and CMU's busy, too. So it'd be nice to know that there's something steady, not something that council is just coming up with some programs. We work with Computer Reach to give, distribute computers. We do all sorts of things that are helpful, but it'd be great to know that you can go to your library or go someplace where the coding classes are offered for people of all ages and people in all different skill levels trying to return to the workforce, and we're just trying to get into that.
Right.
So could you talk a little bit about, is there any plans about that?
Yeah, we do have coding classes.
I know you do, but they're not.
Yeah, and we've done a lot with, first of all, we've done them with adults, and we find that they really are very popular, and that's one of the things that we want to do with this volunteer-led adult learning is actually those kinds of programs where people can learn from each other and learn from an expert. We've taught all of our staff computer coding, and we do offer programs for teens and for younger children in this, but I think that your point of something a little more.
There's adults. We get a lot of requests for adults, for adults to have classes, and I don't, I honestly don't know where to send them. I've tried sending them different places, but they come back. They usually come back to us.
Yeah, we'll take that back, and I will connect, I will connect with some of our folks, because I know we're doing it. So you're saying that there's a specific need in, in your district.
Well, I think it's all over the city, but in my district, they're asking for coding classes for adults, but they're asking for some certifications and things like that.
Sure.
So you're not just taking a coding class that does nothing for you.
Absolutely.
That's actually leading you to a career.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of our goals, is that learning at the library should be credentialed, so this is a really good, Carolyn's writing it down.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I've been talking about it for three years now, so if you're the first one that does it, then I mean.
The other thing I will say is that I do know that they have, our staff have developed a digital literacy curriculum, and coding is definitely part and parcel of that. And I think there are 12 steps along the way, and so there's lots of good thought that's getting put together about this.
I'll be honest, the first place I look when people ask me for anything, I check the library first because it's become so accessible in so many ways. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, thank you. Wonderful.
Councilman, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Well, I'm interested in another library that's in Councilwoman Teresa Kiel Smith's district, and that's the Mount Washington one, and I see work has started there.
Have you seen the plans?
I did, yes.
It's just stunning.
It's going to be beautiful.
It's stunning, it really is.
It really is going to be really, really nice.
Don't you have a new one in Carrick, too?
Oh, the Carrick one's beautiful. I love it. You know, it put a spark there.
How hard did we work on that? That was like an eight-year process. No, it's his. It was always his. That was like an eight-year process.
Tell him it's yours, he won't remember.
It's really, you're right, I won't know the difference anyway. But no, the Mount Washington one, though, I'm really looking forward to that, and not because Lisa and I own the property adjoining it, but it certainly is going to help the cause, you know, our property value, believe me, I'm already, Mount Washington's already through the roof as it is, but you know, you know, right off the back entrance, which you're going to open that back up now, which I think is really great. So, so I think, and so that's started, it's going to be gone through, it's going to be.
Right, we're on track. You know, we started, we had roof done and.
I saw the roofers, yeah.
Right, we're working, but we're now doing the internal, and there's a lot of really good work. We will reopen it in, we hope, early summer next year.
That's ambitious, yeah, yeah.
And as you know, we always do a big event that you will be invited to because we want to make sure that.
We're not inviting Kalkiel, okay?
We'll tell him it's a different day.
He doesn't have to be next door to his property.
We, no, we do, we'll do.
I was never very good at libraries, anyway, but yeah.
You know, and you've been, you know, the community events where we actually open it to the community on a Saturday and invite everyone in, they're so much fun. So we want to make sure you're all part of the celebration.
Yeah, no, the Carrick one was beautifully done by both of you and your staff, and you know, I think it's been frequenting pretty well. Every time I go by there, I look in and I'm like.
Yeah, they're, they're busy. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So has the, has the amount of volume of people gone up since the new place?
They always do.
Yeah, I would think so. It's much more inviting, and you know, you see it, it's.
Yeah, and people, yeah.
It was about this big, you know? It really was a broom closet.
And you really couldn't see inside, and now it really is a much more prominent.
It's gorgeous. I think other things happen around it, it's just, you know, people see that and the investment that the libraries make.
And the community had a lot to do with that. I mean, internally, you know, staff and board, I mean, worked diligently to make that happen. And like I said, it was a good eight-year process, but the community really is who drove that final project and was able to bring that in to be what it ultimately became.
And a lot has been made lately of the, you know, the park tax, and obviously, we can look back to the libraries and say, well, this was really the start of all this, but to me, that's completely different, two different things. It was mandated by the state, number one. It's a learning institution, you know, you know, and I love, proof is in the pudding. What you've done with the libraries over the past years have been great investments and worth every penny of the taxpayer money.
We learned the importance of brick and mortar in that process and in coming into a digital age, right, and yet still understanding the importance, as the councilwoman said, of community centers and that anchor in the middle of a neighborhood where people can collect and socialize and interact with one another, you know, share their stories or, you know, their kids have someone to play with. Knoxville serves as, probably as much as anything, a community center for Knoxville. Every time I go in there, it's filled with young people that basically would probably have not a whole lot else to do if they didn't have the library to sort of pull them all together. So it's, yeah, it's incredibly important to have brick and mortar.
Yeah, and I benefit, even though the Beachview one's not in my district, but you know, most people think it is. Probably should be in my district, but you know, I don't know. When does redistricting come off?
Well, you might be out of the district the next one.
You're right, you're right.
And you've got Brookline.
Brookline's, of course, Brookline was one of the original. That goes back some years now, and you know what I love about it? It's still in great shape, it still looks brand new. It's not run down, so.
It's beautiful, yeah.
So everything that's being done on these sites are very good, very well thought out. As a contractor's eye, I can tell they're built to last, which is great, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's important that they're there forever. These are, you know, really, really great amenities for the city to have, so. So I just want to come out, you know, add my two cents, thank you for what you do, you know?
Thank you for all your support.
No complaints whatsoever on my end, other than I think you started a whole trend of, you know, raising taxes.
We, you know what, let me, I want to back that up a little bit because that was not taken lightly. We, I, a good year and a half, I want to say, behind the scenes, just anguishing over how, you know, how do we get through this? What do we do? You know, what are our different opportunities? What are our obligations? What should we do? What shouldn't we do? And we went through, you were talking about the task force. I mean, we listed everything from bake sales to the tax, you know, and everything in between. And what can we do? Because we understood the importance of this organization to all humanity in Pittsburgh. It serves everybody, free to the people, right? And how do we, how do we meet that obligation and yet do it responsibly in a way that we can bring the public in as our sort of co-supporters of this? And when we finally did launch that, after that extensive process, when it did come to a vote, 70?
Seventy-two percent, yeah.
That was my next question. So that referendum back then was 72% approved?
Positive.
Wow, is that right?
I mean, who wouldn't kill for numbers like that, right? I mean, it was amazing. It's a public spoke loud and clear of the importance of their libraries.
The latest tax increase was 72% also, but it was against it in my district for the referendum.
And on that note, can I share something?
They're not always totally free, right?
I want to share something, and I don't, but this was terribly sweet. So many of you know, my mother passed recently, and on October 4th, I got this letter in the mail, and I just really want to share because I think this touched me, I think more than just about anything else. It came from Mary Frances, and it was addressed to me, and it said, "Please accept my sincere condolences on the passing of your mother. My thoughts and those of the entire Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh family are with you during this difficult time." This is, this was the killer here. "In your mother's memory and in the spirit of her volunteer work creating blankets for children in need, the library will place a book plate in a special item of lasting value to the collection. The book plate will be placed in a title relating to your mother's love of crocheting and will read 'In the Memory of Dolores Bernice Kraus' by the board, staff, and volunteers of the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh." Wasn't that sweet? Yeah, I think that touched me more than anything in that whole process.
Well, Bruce has been a tremendous supporter of the library. He's been on the board for.
12?
12 years and has, has absolutely been an active member and a real supporter, so.
Oh, he really has been.
Yeah.
I had no idea the importance of the system and how it really relates to just humanity in its entirety. And I've said this before, but we think the doors just open and things magically happen, and the books are there and you just show up, but when you get in there and you get into the meat of what it takes to run a library system for a major city like the city of Pittsburgh, you understand just how difficult it can be, but how important the work is and how important it is to be dedicated to the work.
The parks are going to donate one for, a plate for myself and Anthony and Deb Gross. It might be a dog dish, but they're going to donate.
So can we add another really nice positive note? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you all.
I may not, is it four o'clock?
Yeah.
I may not. I have this to.
I know, I know.
I'll do my best.
Yeah, it's not four yet, but yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Is that yours?
Bye.
Yeah, this is going to be the gem of them all, I think.
She was going to throw her body down in 2009 and never going to sell it.
It's going to open this summer, right?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, happy to. Georgia and Jeremy, come on down. You're the next contestants on The Price is Right. Okay. Madam Clerk, welcome. Have we done this once or twice before? I think we might have, haven't we? I actually look forward to this.
Anthony.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, Georgia.
Hi, Georgia.
I was going to say, I'm going to stand up and nobody will reach me.
A lot of differences between her and I. All C Y's and looks. No, she, no, you say I'm not here.
All right, because I didn't realize I was going to inherit this. Okay, would that be all right? But when we're done here, I'll meet you. Okay, sounds good. So I actually, I enjoy doing this one, and I'm actually glad the councilman couldn't be here and asked me to step in because I really believe in the importance and value that the business improvement districts bring to the city, and I don't think downtown or Oakland would be what they are in terms of the services that are provided and how those neighborhoods are presented, and the importance of those neighborhoods and why they should be presented as clean and safe and orderly and organized. So with that.
We're going to do both, right?
We're going to, we're going to do both together, if you guys don't mind, it just makes it easier.
The Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership and Oakland Business Improvement District, formed in 1996 by downtown businesses, professionals, civic organizations, foundations, and residents. The Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership develops and implements innovative programs and initiatives to enhance the downtown neighborhood. They also promote and market this great urban center to millions of people as the region's premier destination to do business, to call home, or to visit for the best shopping, dining, and entertainment experiences. The PDP also stands as staunch advocates for all those who make downtown part of their lives, from businesses to workers to residents. In 2015, city council extended the designation of the Pittsburgh Downtown Pittsburgh Business Improvement District through 2021, which will then come back in front of council. That's one of council's responsibilities. Oakland Business Improvement District, the Oakland Business Improvement District is an economic development agency representing local businesses, commercial property owners, universities, hospitals, nonprofits, and government organizations working to make Oakland, Pittsburgh's most vibrant business district community. The organization also takes the lead on Innovation Oakland, a project with the goal of making Oakland's largest business district the hub of technology and innovation, and Startup Oakland, a campaign helping to grow Oakland's startup community. In 2018, city council extended the designation of the Oakland Business Improvement District for an additional five years. So we'll be back in 2023 to renew that.
We'll be here. So is it okay to just go in line since we are that way? So Georgia, can we start with you? And then we'll go on to Jeremy?
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you for having us here this year. First, definitely I want to recognize Pittsburgh City Council, Councilwoman Kraus, Council, Councilwoman Strausberger, and Councilman Lavelle, whose all three districts actually overlap within the Business Improvement District in Oakland. We do an enormous amount with their offices, with all the offices of council and with the city, many, many departments. We really couldn't be and do what we do if we didn't have the partnerships we have with the city, so we want to formally recognize that with all your staff and all your partners and departments. So as I'm sure everyone's experiencing, Oakland is in massive transformation, as is the rest of Pittsburgh, which has been very exciting. It's a very exciting year for our organization. On behalf of my board of directors, of which we have 30 members strong, we have about 250 members of property and business owners. We want to thank the city, and we are excited about what's been happening and what's, what's, what Oakland is going through. what Oakland is going through. So in, just wanted to go over some of the programs and, and projects that we do and some of the things that we're looking forward to. As you know, of course, the core of Business Improvement Districts and what started our organization and continues to be, the core critical services that we provide are the cleaning, the daily services of sidewalk sweeping. We have a full-time crew of five to six members who are out there no matter what the weather, rain, snow, they're out there. They get a handful of holidays off, they get obviously their vacation time. But this team is very committed to the district. They're keeping it clean. We, in addition to their hard work, we also have what we call our beautification services. So there are banners, there are flower baskets, there are sidewalk planters, there's landscaping in places where we can put it in. So these are the beautification things that we know is important for any community and any district coming into the Fifth Forbes Corridor. And then, of course, placemaking. So now, you know, as, as always, wherever we have open space, and now it's great to be in a city that all of our communities, whether especially downtown Oakland, all our neighborhood districts are recognizing the importance of the sidewalks, how we give that back to the people. So we're also embarking on additional, what we're calling, activation projects for the business district. Our first project that we did in partnership with the Pittsburgh Innovation District is we did a decorative lighting project spanning Oakland Avenue. We call it kind of our restaurant row. We have many independent restaurants, international restaurants, a great plethora of cuisine. We added some decorative lighting to that to re-enhance the sidewalks. Just last month, the Art Commission approved our second pilot that we're going to introduce to the district. We're going to try out some new seating, some tables and chairs and benches and new sidewalk receptacles, and some sort of art painting on the poles on Forbes Avenue. So this will be in front of our storefront businesses in the few moments where we have some wide sidewalks. So we really are pushing this activation. We understand how important placemaking is. And then in partnership with our institutional partners, UPMC and University of Pittsburgh, we're planning some installations as well in their open spaces. We don't have much open green space in our Business Improvement District. It's very dense, as you all know. It continues to get more dense. Councilman Kraus could speak to that. There's a demand for more building, more construction, more density. But where we can, we know the importance of open spaces, and we want to make sure that they're activated and they're places that people can enjoy. So these are some additional projects that we're very proud of to be able to put out. And then from an advocacy standpoint, as business, as a business community, it's very important that we put our voice out for things that matter for the people in addition to the importance of business, obviously, your storefronts, consumption, places for people to come and eat, places for people to come and shop. But we also, it's very important for business community to put their voice behind things that matter from an advocacy standpoint. So I'm very proud of our business district community for two programs that we have in place. Many partners are involved, but thankfully, the bid has taken the lead on Oakland for All, which is a campaign to continue to raise awareness for why we should create communities and neighborhoods for people with disabilities. We've done a lot of work, we've accomplished a lot, we have more to do. But I'm very excited that we have a, a community of restaurants and businesses that are starting to take this more serious and are beginning to make improvements. In the past two years, thanks to a $30,000 grant that we received from the Department of Community Economic Development in partnership with the URA, we gave out storefront grants to six restaurants that actually removed the barriers at their entryway. That actually leveraged an additional $100,000 on their part for various improvements. There's more to do, but it was a good start. And so we're going to continue to push for that importance. And the second campaign is actually, there's a national campaign that was brought to southwestern Pennsylvania through the FISA Foundation and the Heinz Endowment's called the Say No More Campaign. This is about how we can raise awareness on preventing sexual violence and abuse. And so thankfully, in partnership with these foundations, again, as a business community, we started a campaign called Oakland Says No More. The goal ultimately is to create safe spaces and to send the message that we are a community of safe spaces, we are a community of bars and restaurants and businesses that we want to be safe. So again, there's more work to do on that front, but very excited about the business community pushing that from an advocacy standpoint. And then just lastly, as you all will know, that through the Department of City Planning, the city of Pittsburgh is undertaking a very important planning process right now for Oakland. We're undertaking the development of an Oakland plan, which will impact the district and the, all of the neighborhoods and business districts and communities of Oakland for the next ten years. This plan, we hope to have it completed within a year. And when I say we, I want to say OBIT is one of many partners and stakeholders at the table, working with the Department of City Planning and their staff to produce this plan. So the business, our business district community is represented through OBIT, and we want to make sure that we continue to raise awareness of what that plan is proposing, what ideas and feedback comes back, what's the voice of the business and property owner community. And it's very exciting because it's a, it's a good time to be thinking about Oakland in the next ten years, considering that we've made a major change and we're creating a new district. So, so with that, I just want to reiterate, cannot thank you enough as our council members. We really cannot do what we do. We can't succeed without you all, and you're, and just thank you for the continued support and come to Oakland.
Let's do Jeremy's opening statement, and then we'll open it up to the table collectively for any questions you might have, okay?
All right.
Thanks, Jeremy. Welcome.
Thanks, Council President Kraus. Again, I'm Jeremy Waldrup, President and CEO of the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about our work. As you heard, our organization was founded by business and community leaders, city government, property owners, and civic organizations to provide energy, vision, and advocacy for downtown Pittsburgh. As Georgia mentioned, we too work collaboratively with a whole host of partners, including city staff, Councilman Lovell, our local council member, striving to create a positive experience in downtown for our residents, workers, and visitors. We do this through a wide range of services. I just want to highlight a few of those. Of course, clean and safe services remain critical functions of our organization. Our clean team removes over 1.2 million pounds of garbage from downtown streets every year. We also have a big cigarette litter campaign effort underway. Last year, we collected 1,500 pounds of cigarette butts, a lot. We also have an extensive graffiti removal program, trying to ensure that that doesn't take hold here in downtown. We continue to leverage a large number of volunteers with over 3,000 individuals volunteering, primarily on Saturdays and Sundays every weekend of the year, to support leaf collection, weeding, mowing, graffiti removal, and general cleaning of the periphery of downtown. Yeah, it's, it's here. We appreciate the support of the universities. Pitt, CMU, Duquesne, and Point Park students play a large role in helping us with those efforts. We appreciate the continued leadership and the additional investment in police services in downtown Pittsburgh. After a number of incidences this summer, we've seen a significant increase in the number of uniformed and undercover officers in downtown and know that that's through a direct investment made by, by city government. We understand that the proposed 2020 budget allocates additional resources to enhance those services that are being provided in the downtown substation, and we believe that a very visible police force is critical to creating a place that people want to continue to be a part of and invest in. So we appreciate that continued support. We've also done a significant bit of outreach with young people in downtown. We have almost 2,000 students. We now have four high schools operating in downtown Pittsburgh. Then we have an additional 1,500 to 2,000 students transferring through downtown on a daily basis. So making sure that they feel safe and welcomed while also not overwhelming our small businesses is critical. Through the leadership of the U.S. Attorney's Office and a whole host of partners, the schools themselves, the Port Authority, the police, we have, and students, we've created a number of programs that conduct outreach, create safe places for students to access, and we're very pleased that our advocacy efforts are bringing youth places to downtown Pittsburgh with a pilot location that will be opening up in January in the, in retail space along Penn Avenue at the Commission Center. So this pilot will be open for the remainder of the school year, providing students with a safe place to go for after-school activities. They can also learn about a whole host of after-school programs that are available throughout the city, and we look forward to, to working with these kids and supporting those efforts. We've also doubled down on our efforts to support individuals experiencing homelessness through an outreach team of the Downtown Partnership. We work with local police, Mercy, and a whole host of service providers to ensure that individuals in need of homeless services have access to them. We want to make sure that people are safe. We want to make sure that if they want a place to sleep indoors, that we can provide access to that. It's critical to ensuring, again, that downtown remains a place for everyone. We continue to grow the number of events that we provide in downtown Pittsburgh, well over 200 of those. We feel that these events create a vibrant experience that supports the retailers and restaurants and hotels in downtown Pittsburgh. This work is exemplified during the holiday season. We recently kicked off the holiday season with the 59th Annual Light Up Night, a huge success. The opening of the 8th Annual People's Gas Holiday Market in the middle of Market Square has been just a great opportunity to support the businesses in and around Market Square and really create an anchor destination in downtown. We continue to look at new opportunities. This year, we piloted with the mayor's office to support an immigrant entrepreneurial night market, so bringing immigrant-owned businesses from around the city into the square and providing them some technical assistance to do that, which we'd love to see more opportunities like that in the future. Additionally, this year, we've been working with downtown property owners and the commercial brokerage community to promote and market downtown Pittsburgh as a place for innovative and creative companies to do business. We want to make sure that downtown's not just seen as a place for bankers and lawyers. We love them, but we know that this new economy is really focused on tech companies and creative space, creative sector companies. We want to make sure that they, they find those spaces in downtown Pittsburgh. You'll see in your packet that the 2020 bid budget will increase to 2.398 million, as set forth in the bid's five-year renewal legislation that began in 2017. As in past years, the bid allocation is 63% invested in clean and safe services, programs to market downtown at 371,000. Eight percent is going towards planning, data analysis, and economic development, and then 4% to our mobility and transportation efforts. In 2020, we'll continue to focus on encouraging new investment in retail, office, and residential markets, complete our recently announced Mobility Network Plan in partnership with SBC, the Port Authority, and Domi. We are also continuing efforts to support the, the regional maker community through a retail pop-up store in the Mellon Square Retail titled PG&amp;H. We specifically appreciate the, the work of Department of Public Works, Public Safety, the Bureau of Police, Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and City Planning. Their staff, again, are critical to supporting the efforts of our organization and our stakeholders. So thank you again for the opportunity and happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman, I think you might need to be somewhere. Would you like to go first?
Yeah, I just want to say that, thank you both for your work. I mean, I can really see, you know, my family lives on Fifth Avenue in Oakland. They're actually getting ready to move. But I just want to tell you that I, just driving through Oakland and seeing the lights and some of the things that are going on there are really exciting. And it's, yeah, I'm there every Sunday, so I do go to Oakland. I visit Oakland every Sunday. And I just want to tell you that it's really starting to really shine a lot. And I mean, it always, I always say, I wish I represented Oakland because it's still always near and dear to my heart. But I just want to say, I appreciate the work that is being done and the great council of leadership that's there as well. So thank you for your work. But there's something always so magical about downtown, especially at Christmas time. And I, the work that you're doing is just amazing. So I think you really have your challenges, you know, cut out for you, but I think that you're handling them very well, and you're doing a really good job. Just like I said, I just love seeing downtown. I am hoping to see some, some more shops that where I can come down, down to town. But I think that we're starting to see those happen. But even if without, even without a shop, I mean, there's always restaurants, there's always places to visit, just even just going through town is just magical. So I just want to thank you for, for making it, helping, for your part of making it that way. And for also donating, sometimes you have the, I think it's the, I think it's you who have the Toys in Market Square, the big games.
Yeah, yeah.
So you've donated or loaned them to us before for different things. So I want to thank you for also being a partner in the, in the community as well.
No, of course. Happy to do so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris.
Ah, hi.
Hi.
Still feeding those birds. Did you notice, though, it's bringing in the larger birds into the city? And we have a lot more bird watchers. So it's funny how, how things like that happen. But I love downtown. I can't tell you how much I miss Macy's. And I'm sure you do too, because that was sort of like a block there.
Yeah, no, it's an anchor institution. Tomorrow night, the grand opening of the Even Hotel, though, so slowly starting to see that building transform, which is going to be huge for that block. Having it empty has, has really going to suck the life out of the core of that specific block. So, so we're excited to see that open up.
I don't, I just don't see it as the same, though.
I know. It's not, yeah, it's never going to be that.
I still see vibrant downtown where my grand brought me and every little store. I mean, you didn't need to go anywhere. It's malls. And I know that's, that's where you're headed, is trying to do that, and I really appreciate that.
You can still meet people under the clock, though.
I'll meet people, yeah. That wasn't taken off of them. But thank you for everything you're doing now. Are we paying you to clean up, or you're paying us?
No, the property owners self-assess to pay for that service.
From the city?
We simply collect the taxes, Councilwoman.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, yeah, we collect the taxes. We send the bill. We're a taxing authority, so we send out a bill.
I, I just want the public to hear that.
Yeah, sure.
Because I think they were hearing it wrong.
Yeah, so property owners in both Oakland and downtown have agreed to self-assess. This taxing district is reviewed every five years. We have to go back to all of our stakeholders and, and re-engage them and say, here's what we've done and here's what we plan to do with this investment. Do you agree? And if they do, then we carry on those services. So it's legislatively authorized, so we are quasi-government in that perspect, in that respect. But yeah, those services are then, or those funds are managed by a Board of Directors, which is also very prescriptive in our bylaws as to who should be represented on those boards. And it does include a whole host of government elected officials in, in that as well.
And that, that's one thing that I wanted to get...
Sure, yeah, no, it's good to get that out there.
And the other is the cigarette butts. Are they going on the ground?
Yeah. We have placed over 100 containers. A lot of them are attached to...
Do you know there were a lot that didn't, the containers weren't there? People were using the tops of the cans and everything else.
Yeah.
They were ending up on the ground. And I thought, well, if they only had just the cigarette but, container on them, or... Do you see a difference now?
We do. We still see a lot going into the river. I mean, we, we feel that we're kind of the, the place of last resort. We are at the river line, so if it hits the ground and, and isn't picked up, it's going in the river. So we really want to do everything we can to keep those out of the river. And so it's been successful. Some people still choose to, to flick them into the sewer drains, which is unfortunate. And I don't know how we're going to change that behavior, but it's certainly something that our team is, is working on, trying to find places where that tends to be habitual of, here's a place where a lot of people like to, to gather to smoke. So yeah, it's been successful. There's still work to do.
Yeah, I was wondering, because for a while, they, they didn't even have the containers on the side of the key. So then I think people have done it purposely to get something put there, so.
Yeah, we appreciate Keep American Beautiful has been a supporter of this program at a national level. So their recycling program actually turns those into, to plastic pallets, which is pretty cool.
So are you seeing the pigeons moving away now?
I haven't seen them...
As much?
As much in the parks. Maybe Mellon Square, I think Market Square, just having a lot of activation and programming. I haven't seen them. And I know Grant Street still has a good, a good bit of them.
Yes. But I didn't know if you were aware that they can't take them out of Pittsburgh anymore, which I think was a big problem. When people were doing what they were doing down in the... Smolman Street. But that seems like it's over now, and nature seems to take care of itself. And they've been, the larger birds have been swooping in here now. And that's great to have so many different kinds now than what we had before. But it's not easy trying to take what was all torn up and put it back together. And it's, it's hard to do, I think. Having the musicals and everything that we have downtown. And my daughter got tickets for my granddaughter to see The Nutcracker and didn't invite me. So I don't know how that would happen. She says, oh, her teacher is in it. So she has to go see her teacher at The Nutcracker. But there are a whole lot of people that, that want to come downtown to shop, but they also want to make it, make sure it's safe.
Sure.
And, and it should be safe, just like all of our neighborhoods should be safe. So I thank you for what you're doing, and you've got an enormous problem. You're starting to, well, you've had it with all the kids being dropped off downtown and having the schools down here also, plus the colleges. But I don't, I don't think you're seen as the South Side as much.
Yeah, no.
They still, they still go to the South Side. And Oakland, I don't think you're seeing as much as you did before. You're doing a lot out in Oakland, too.
In terms of, oh, right, student population, definitely, of course. And I mean, we do have, we also have high schools in and around our business district. So the activity, sometimes because of the large presence of the college community, one forgets that we actually do have high schools as well. And of course, we have the youngsters, the toddlers through at the daycare centers on each of the campuses. Carlo, Carnegie Mellon, and Pitt all offer daycare, so, you know, all age students definitely come through. But of course, we are the college town center, I think, of southwestern Pennsylvania is definitely in Oakland.
Um, well, uh, I want to thank you for all the hard work that you're doing, um, just like trying to bring, uh, some of our neighborhoods back together, the business districts. It takes time and it takes a whole lot of energy from a whole lot of people. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you both for being here, Georgia, Jeremy. Um, Georgia, I'll start with you. I mean, I'm just curious as to, uh, what your opinion is, because all your work is focused in Oakland. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, the Central Oakland Commercial District is where we are.
And I hear, yeah, I haven't been out there lately, but you know, I hear, you know, it's really looking good. And you actually have your own clean team? You have people?
Right. So, as Jeremy noted, um, so we, you know, our, our, both of our business improvement districts are legislated, uh, property owner community and of course, business owner communities as well, because they're the tenants that, you know, through, through their rents, they also pay and support the bid districts. Um, they, um, they agree to self-assess to provide services. Um, those services have to be focused and specific in, in the business improvement district geographic area, and they have to be for the purposes of enhancing the district. Um, and so, um, what, as a result of that, you, most business improvement districts, when they're formed, are formed around clean and green. We've, we've since evolved and taken on much more. We don't just maintain, we actually now are changing and designing what the district could look like, especially in the public right of way, the public realm. But maintenance is, is the core of a bid. And so, um, in the case of both of our bids, and I think most bids across the United States, um, you contract a private company or you can take them on as staff. In the case of, um, and I know for both of our organizations, we contract a company, um, and then that, that they provide an annual service for us.
Okay, so it's, so you sub that out then, so?
Right. But for example, the Department of Public Works, their staff, your staff comes through and empties out the trash receptacles.
Right, right.
Which is a huge help to us.
Sure.
So, um, and we have close to, from, I think 50 throughout the commercial district. That's no small undertaking. We rely heavily on that.
Sure.
Um, so, so that's, you know, the, our private company does not do that. That is where we rely on the city department to help us. In the, just in the focus of maintenance, I mean, there's other things.
Yeah, your clean teams, they walk around with, uh, brooms and dust pans, right?
Yes.
I mean, they're actually picking stuff up. I, I love that idea. I just think it's so important, you know?
They pressure wash too. They hire, um, to remove the gum stains and some of the-
Yeah.
And extra filth. They use a high-pressure water system for that as well.
I think it's so important for, for any business districts, let alone our two, two major districts here. And Georgia, just want to get your thoughts on, you know, you've heard about the BRT and that coming through. Do you look at that as a positive for Oakland?
I mean, our, yeah, our business, our board of directors and, and many of our partners and stakeholders have supported the project and supported the effort, um, you know, because it's, uh, going to create dedicated lanes for, um, sort of these new, not just a new system, you'll see new buses, but you'll see new stations as well. Um, and so, we have to, yes, we have provided support towards the effort and towards the design of the project.
I figured you would be in support of that every four minutes. I mean, they're talking about something coming by, providing they get the funds. That's, of course, I think we're still a long way, way from that. But when I look at Pitt games at the Heinz Field, I think the students is-
Right.
Is, is close in geographical distance that downtown in Oakland is. It's not easy to get from Oakland to downtown-
Right.
-all the time, even though it's, we're talking two miles. You can walk it, but you know, not everybody can do that. I can't help but to think Pitt students would attend when it was in Oakland at the old stadium. I can't remember what that name of the stadium was, but, um, but I, I guess I felt like it was more, better attended at that point, but, um-
Yeah, and alumni too, by the way.
Yeah.
We, we, alum come back.
Sure.
They come back and they will come back for the football games, the basketball games.
Well, thanks for the work you do. I, I understand Oakland's doing great. And that's of course, you know, like a limb of downtown. When you look at it, when you're flying over Pittsburgh, you know, I always see Oakland, which looks like a major metropolis in any other city, and downtown. And now, Jeremy, with you now with this development going on in the Hill District, um, you know, I almost feel like eventually those are going to be joined in some degree, you know? Not with skyscrapers, I hope.
Sure.
But, you know, uh, to some degree, I, I feel like it's going to, but, but Jeremy, I know the safety has been a big issue downtown. And you know, I want to commend you for taking the stance that you did. I, I followed that closely. My daughter lives on Penn Avenue, uh, she works, she parks at the convention center. She leases a spot in there. And, you know, she feels, she tells me that, and, and this, this is current day too, you know, that, um, she's safer, she lived in New York City. She felt safer in New York City than she does downtown Pittsburgh. And in many ways, I think that-
How?
Oh, wow? Okay, I was going to say how, I don't know where to begin on that, but we have to get her in there for that. So, and she feels it's an unsafe element around, you know, um, maybe the theater district, maybe, you know, she lives on Penn Avenue. Uh, and don't get me wrong, um, for whatever we have to do to help homeless people or panhandlers to get them off the street, um, but the bottom line is, they're not good for business, period. They're really not, you know? And they're not good for residents. My daughter lives there, she says on any given, given evening, six, seven, at a, you know, and now they know her, so you know, certain ones know not to, you know, kind of solicit her, but, but then there are new ones all the time. Um, it's just not good for business.
Youth people.
I don't know what the answer is, but I think youth places is an important part of that, you know? I serve on the SEA board, Jeremy, and you know, we, I guess, kind of gave them that space, they're going to do some things as far as like finish to put a bathroom in and things like that. But for the younger generation, I think that youth places is going to serve as a great spot to help alleviate kids gathering, um, you know? Not to say kids are bad downtown, but anytime you get, you know, 20, 25 kids together, you know, things happen, bad things happen sometimes. So, so we welcome that youth places. I, I like what they're doing. It's got to be safe though, you know? I mean, Jeremy, downtown, what is the biggest complaint from business owners? Is it parking? Is it safety? Is, would, in your opinion?
Yes.
[laughing]
Uh, yeah, depends on the day, um, but parking, you know, continues to be a concern of folks. And safety, um, and just having eyes and ears out on the street. And, you know, our staff and I think the police are doing a good job of just trying to engage folks, understand what they're up to, what their motives are.
Right.
If they're up to no good, you know, we'd like to see them get out.
And you say the city has stepped up its efforts and since-
Yeah, yeah.
For the past five months.
Most definitely, um, with respect to Zone Two and the leadership there. We've had some transitions, so we're still working through that. I anticipate that we'll have more after the first of years, my understanding, but we have seen an increase in manpower.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of flow of communication to stakeholders. Um, we're meeting with them a couple of times a month. Uh, we have some corridor-specific work.
That's great.
Um, and then we have kind of a blanket, uh, we're inviting residents, we're inviting business owners. We really want to hear from folks and understand their concerns and then work to address them. You know, there's, uh, there's environmental concerns of just not enough light. So, you know, through public art, we're trying to light up alleyways, we're trying to increase, um, uh, light, uh, on specific streets in downtown Pittsburgh as well, just additional poles. Those things all make a big difference. Uh, you know, your daughter, if she's walking down a street all alone, you feel unsafe. And that can happen to you at 10, 11 o'clock on just about any street in downtown Pittsburgh. So, we want to make sure that, you know, it's well-lit, um, you feel like there's a place to go if you do have any concerns and that you see police officers on a frequent occasion, because it, it certainly helps. And so, you know, crime rates are still relatively low. We haven't seen a huge spike. Um, it is very safe, but that perception of safety continues to be a big challenge.
And, and are you probably, this is more Kevin McMahon's, you know, I was down at Les Mis the other night, recommended highly.
Did you cry?
It's my favorite show. Threw out the whole thing, honestly. But I try to do it, pretend like I'm sniffling and you know, I hide my tears. But, but, uh, yeah, absolutely, I cried. That's a, that's a great show. It's, it's my favorite. But I'll tell you this, going in there, you know, I felt like, oh my gosh, it was like such a escapade to get in there because of the new safety measures.
Yeah.
And I just think it's not, don't get me wrong, I understand safety. I understand keeping somebody out of there with bad intentions. But you know, bad intentions could happen out on the sidewalk as well. It made it the, the experience a little more unpleasant for me. Probably not something I should be taking up with you, Jeremy, but maybe Kevin, I guess, because, uh, because it just seems like, huh, gosh, I feel like we're, I feel like I'm leaving a prison or going into a prison at that point. In the time, 45 minutes, we're, we're barely making it there, so, um, so. And then homelessness, that's a, that's the last thing. I mean, uh, homelessness is, panhandlers and home, homeless people are two different people. I know a lot of panhandlers who, you know, live in nice homes, believe it or not.
Yeah.
But, uh, but homelessness, I don't see that in the downtown area as much as I do as under the bridges and things like that where they're looking for shelter. But is that a huge problem here?
Um, I wouldn't say it's a huge problem when, when you compare ourselves to other large cities.
They're not over the sidewalk yet.
But it is an issue. Um, you know, we, we have about 25 to 50 people sleeping on the streets at any given time in downtown.
Sure.
Our team knows that, tries to, to develop relationship with them. Uh, the, the Cold Weather Shelter opened up a couple of weeks ago. Um, I think on average, they serve between 90 and 100 people. Um, so those folks are, you know, this is kind of a place of last resort. Um, we are advocating for additional mental health services. Um, a lot of these folks have kind of fallen through their cracks.
That's really what it comes down to.
Do you ever ask where they're from?
All the time, yeah. We, we try and understand their story.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what are they looking to do?
Out of 79 on one street, only one was from Pittsburgh.
Really?
One out of 79.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the downtown churches, um, through the ministerium has done some tremendous work from an outreach perspective, um, Mercy running the Cold Weather Shelter. Um, so we, we greatly appreciate that. We, we would like to see DHS, um, invest more in this Cold Weather Shelter. We'd love for it to have a more permanent home. Uh, there's some gaps in services when folks are, uh, kind of moved from one location to another. So, there's a three-hour window of, of where people really have no place to go as the weather turns. Uh, that's problematic and they tend to kind of all gather in one spot, which can be challenging for folks that are trying to walk down the street or conduct business around there. Um, so yeah, we're hopeful that we'll see those changes.
With the smell.
What about the new theater coming downtown? You know, that new theater, Cinemax?
Yeah. Um, my understanding is, uh, they've narrowed it down to just a couple of operators and they should be making, uh, an announcement on that, hopefully.
I love the idea. I know they raised money through some foundations and some things like that. I worry about security at a movie theater, I could tell you. But, um, but, but you know, I love that idea. I just, so, so that's something you promote, you're-
Yeah, I mean, we really appreciate the cultural trust and, you know, they're-
Okay, so that's going into the cultural district.
Yeah, it's going into, uh, the former Bally's, which the trust has owned, um, for a number of years now. And, uh, I think it'll be a great addition to, to downtown for the residents and workers as well as kind of being a destination for folks to get into. Uh, I think they're trying to do something different, special that we don't have in the market today.
Well, thanks for both, all, all the work you do. I mean, downtown Pittsburgh, like Councilwoman Kiel Smith, there's something special about it and as Oakland as well. Um, you know, and there's no better view from up top Mount Washington in all the world, I don't think, uh, so have, has that panoramic view. Um, but yeah, that's it for me. Thanks. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So, I'm, I do have some remarks, but I want to jump into this conversation on a homeless population first and ju- just sort of offer my understanding of it. It's, it's an incredibly complex and complicated situation. We're not alone in, in our struggles to try to understand it. There, uh, there is not a one-size-fits-all definition. We clearly have population that are homeless through situation, circumstance, mental health, physical health, um, uh, military service through no fault of their own. Um, and then we have population that chooses a deliberate, vagrant lifestyle that are healthy and employable and, and can easily choose to be contributors, but have chosen to live a life of vagrancy on the street. And that is more of a population I would like to have a better understanding about how we can grapple with.
Well, if they choose that, isn't it mental illness at the same time?
I, I don't think it is at all. And I, because we grapple with this a lot on the South Side and I've done extensive research and study trying to understand what this sort of transient population that rides the rails and just goes from city to city to city to city, but is clearly connected with iPad and cell phone and digital communication and understanding exactly how the system works and how to work within the system. But to, to chastise people that truly are in need through no fault of their own, whether, uh, that are truly homeless and indigent through mental illness or physical illness, um, or, you know, situation, circumstance or military service is a completely different discussion. And we have to, our hearts have to remain open to understanding and helping how to, to, uh, care for and, um, and to care for.
And you're right, it is very complicated. I understand that. Complicated or not though, it's not good for business. That's all I say, you know? Whether we have to get them off the street, engage with them, however it might be, it's-
So, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you.
I know, I know.
You're not, I just, we struggle-
But you're right, it's complex.
We struggle with it every season when we watch rail riders come into the city.
Yeah.
Young and healthy and employable and vibrant and digitally connected and, you know-
Or so than me.
And, you know, and, but choosing to live. Uh, I think it's, I, uh, oh God, what's the word for it? Fregan, fregan. F-R-E-G-A-N. Look up the Fregan movement and it's a national movement of, of, of highly, largely highly educated and wealthy background, young individuals that have just chosen a life of vagrancy. They want to live on the street.
Seems like a mental illness to me, but.
Okay, so anyway, uh, with that, a couple of things. Um, Oakland, you know, there's a lot of talk about Oakland and Oakland is the third-largest business quarter in the state of Pennsylvania, if I am not mistaken. Like, it's amazing, uh, the, how much Oakland contributes to the health and wellbeing of the city of Pittsburgh. Um, and, um, uh, you know, I just want to recognize the importance, the, um, you know, the BRT, uh, and this sort of understanding of the importance of connecting our two economic engines of downtown and Oakland and especially you, this amazing resurgence in Uptown and what is happening there. Uh, and ultimately, I, not perhaps in our time, you know, but, uh, it's clearly the future of what's going to happen and I think really, uh, put, you know, Pittsburgh on the, on the map economically. And then when you talk about the park being built, uh, to sort of connect downtown with the Lower Hill and it, there's just, you can just see the synergy of how, um, that is going to, going to grow. And I fully support it. I think it's a, it's a wonderful, um, turn of events and, uh, I think it's amazing for us, you know, and, and the region. Uh, I'm going to talk a little bit about the importance of business quarters, um, and what they, they do to help us to, you know? People choose to live in cities for different reasons. Uh, first, most likely is, am I employable? Can I find work there? If I can find work there, can I find housing there? What's the pricing like? If I can find housing there, can I find a good school system for my kids? And if I'm not at work or home or at school, I want to be able to socialize. And if I'm not at work or home or at school, I want to be able to socialize. I want to be out and about. I want to be in public spaces of public gathering. I want to, you know, be, it's an experiential economy. I talked a little bit about this, the mayor last night and our importance of understanding and accepting this whole new economy. You know, generations that are coming into being now are not necessarily interested in purchasing the things that I was interested in purchasing in my life. It's more about, I want to buy experience. I want to, I want to buy experience. And so how do we offer experience and, and environments that are safe and clean and healthy and well lighted? And that, that's the new economic engine for dense urban environments. And, and much of the fight that I've been having over the last 12 years here is, is to get our city to understand that the economics are changing and that we need to, to, uh, we need to embrace this new economy and to protect it. We have an obligation to protect it and help it to thrive. And part of that, which is the work that Georgia and, and Jeremy do are to keep it clean, right? Um, and the importance of environments that look like people don't care about them are treated as though people don't care about them. It becomes, uh, you know, it's self fulfilling prophecy, you know, that whole sort of broken window kind of a thing. So one of the things I want to recognize is, uh, the parking enhancement district that we were, the, the formation of the Oakland bid and the downtown bid, uh, came at a different time before state law changed. And state law i- is fashioned in such a way that it, it, uh, neighborhood improvement districts are more encompassing than business improvement districts. And so they're more challenging to get passed. Uh, but we were able to craft what we call parking enhancement district by which with Jeremy's help over a couple of years now, we had to have been able to use those funds to put a clean team on the street. And when you have a clean team on the street
The South Side?
Mm-hmm. For a year?
Yeah, a little over a year.
Yeah.
Same company?
Uh, uh, better, better block.
Block by block.
Block by block. We contract through the downtown partnership. And as I understand it, I think there's one signature left if I understand it correctly. Um, but, um, we partner with the downtown partnership to use their, uh, uh, block by block, uh, to employ a full-time clean team on, uh, the South Side. But we use a different funding source. We use the parking enhancement district, which right now we've been collecting. I think we're going into our fourth year. I think we've had three, four years of collection of, so we're about $600,000. So we're
Annually or?
No, no, no. Up to this point, but we have exceeded a half a million dollars, uh, in just collecting revenue on Friday and Saturday nights from six to midnight. And, but it's legislated purposefully, like a bid would be legislated, then it must be returned to the, to the parking or to the, uh, defined area of the person's recorder. So those things help tremendously and the, 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 the need for clean and safe environments and what they bring to commerce and, and our, our business districts, it's, you can't argue for it enough.
You know, I just want to say, nothing can screw up all the work that you two have done than one bad incident. Meaning a shooting, which, you know, you've faced in the past, but, uh, yeah, absolutely. Clean and safe. That's the two key elements, I believe, with any city.
In the vein of the conversation we have with the mayor's, uh, uh, budget hearing yesterday, and I promise I will not go on a tirade. But I simply have to say some of this. You mentioned, Jeremy, that you pick up, uh, in one year, you picked up 1.2 million pounds of trash. That didn't just magically evaporate. It has to go somewhere. And 1,500 cigarette butts? 1,500 pounds? 1,500 pounds of cigarette butts? Tobacco.
Number one recycling city for cigarette butts.
You recycle the cigarette butts?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They, they're plastic pallets.
Oh, we have to talk about that. I won't do this here, I promise, but we, I didn't realize that's what was happening with them. Um, tobacco is, uh, not only a health issue, it's an environmental issue. Billions of cigarettes, about 267 billion cigarettes were smoked in 2015. They are the most littered item in the country. The waste from cigarettes leaches into toxic chemicals into the environment, leading to land, water and air pollution. If I remember correctly, when I first got involved with envi- uh, with, um, oh, on the South Side, forgive me. Uh, the environmental, uh, yeah, Pennsylvania, uh, oh my God, I'm so embarrassed. It'll come to me. But at that time, there was something like 300 trillion cigarette butts that were littered on the streets, uh, annually. And that one cigarette butt would contaminate something like 48 gallons of water with 18 known carcinogens. So do the math. So when Jeremy's talking about the importance of picking them up, because if we don't pick them up, they're going to end up in the river. You know, that is, that is, you know, we're, we talk a lot about water and PWSA and the importance of safe and clean water. Here are something that we are doing on a daily basis, or some are choosing to do on a daily basis. And that is to throw 15,000, 1,500 pounds of cigarette butts just in downtown alone, you know? So the conversation, as I see it, really has to go towards reduction. Reduce, reuse, recycle, right? Recycle's at the end of the line, right? Reduce is second, but reduction is first, right? And this idea that it's okay to throw 1,500, 15, 1.2, 1.2 million pounds of garbage on the street every year. And don't worry about it. Somebody will come after you and pick it up. Just, that can't be allowed to continue. It just simply cannot. That's, we, we don't live as civilized people that way, right? I have the same, you know, I could go on for hours, which I promise I will not, about the fond memories I have of what it's like to come downtown and, and you know, participate in all the events and the environment and the, you know, the shops and the way it was in 1960. And you know, Kaufmans and Horns, all that kind of stuff, but, but it's out of those fond memories of, 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 that I have of that, that comes the deep respect for neighborhoods like Oakland and downtown, that they, they deserve to be treated with respect. And that we have to do better than to just think that people can come in and just throw garbage everywhere in cigarette butts. And somebody will just simply come after them and pick them up for them.
Well said. I just have a quick question for you, Councilman.
Yes, sir.
Your clean team on the streets today? I mean, they, your, your clean team for South Side, they like on the streets today?
They're on six days a week.
Like two people?
Two days, six days a week. We've reduced slightly in January and February. We kicked down just a little bit. But, um, they're on Monday, or forgive me, Monday through Sunday, but we only have one on Sunday. I forget exactly.
Just off the top of your head, do you know what it costs for?
It does. It's about 11,000 a month.
11,000 a month? So you're talking 100,000. So you basically pay for a clean team and you have a little bit of money left over?
It takes about half of what we bring in to pay for the clean team.
Money, yeah. 11,000 a month. Okay. That's great.
Yeah. But as Georgia brought up, and I think it's a really important point to make, is that these are supplemental services and they don't negate the services of DPW and the work that the department
They don't empty the trash cans. They, yeah, right.
Right. So I mean, these, these are to sort of, you know, put the, uh, you know, the finishing touches on the services that, that, um, uh, DPW provides, which is important. Uh, one more thing I have to talk about, but I don't know if I, I can talk about it yet, but I think it is a matter of public record. Um, I know the Kaufman's building has been sold to Sofer, but I thought I read somewhere where we are in negotiations, not we, but the owners of the building are in negotiation with Target.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Um, I, I don't know much more than what's been reported. Um, you know, Target has been looking at both Oakland and downtown for
Yeah.
the last four or five years. Um, you know, it would be an urban Target, so a smaller footprint. A lot of online shopping happens now, so you can purchase online, pick up in the store. Um, we think it'd be a great amenity. We would love to see, um, you know, a, a number of stores have a fairly significant grocery component. And we think that'd be a really great addition to have some fresh food in downtown.
Absolutely, Jeremy. My daughter has to come to Green Tree to go shopping, you know, so, so yeah.
Talk about being committed to reducing carbon footprint, right? And being more responsible about our ener- energy consumption, but yet we continue to design developments to purp- not purposefully, but, uh, you know, uh, unintended consequences, putting people in a car to go somewhere for the most fundamental services. Like I need shoe polish and toothpaste and a quart of milk, you know? And, and that, it's nice to see that we're returning to these more centralized, you know? I live here because I can walk everywhere. You talk to anybody that's lived on the South Side, uh, at any length of time. And you say, why do you live here? They look at you like you're on another planet. I live here because I can walk everywhere. You know, this, which is the, the key to, you know, a healthy neighborhood. We want people to be able to get the goods and services that they need without necessarily contributing to the carbon footprint, right?
Every time you say something, you make me want to ask another question. As long as you go on, I'm going to keep going on.
Keep going. I just, I'm going to be mindful of the
Okay. I just wanted to say, the residential living downtown, Jeremy, has gone up how much in the past? I mean, do, do we, do we have a number on how many?
Yeah, yeah. Um, we've grown about 30% over the last eight years or so. Um, the pipeline, you know, we're poised to grow another 30% in the next five years. Um, so the development still continues, um,
Does that include the strip district or not?
Yeah, it's, it's greater downtown. Uh, downtown's seen the largest percent increase.
Is that right? More so than the strip?
Uh, yeah. Well, over time, uh, the strip has more recently seen the larger, larger developments come in. Um, but we have a number of very big office buildings that were converted to residential, so those are kind of not noticed as much, but they're still very impactful. Um, it's something we continue to want to see more of because we think that will support the restaurant and retail scene in significant ways.
It, it all goes together, of course. But a key element of that again is the Targets and the grocery store. So these people come down here, they don't want to, they, most of them, they probably don't want to get in the car, but they have to to go to get some of these things. So, um, so I guess.
Yeah, we need to be at about 25,000 residents in kind of the greater downtown footprint. We're 15, 16,000 right now. Before we really see big grocery stores and, and those types of amenities that you've seen in kind of Center City Philly and some of the larger cities downtown Denver.
This city will still be bustling at nine o'clock at night. You'll see people in the streets where, you know, as of 10 years ago, after five o'clock, it was like dead down here.
Yeah.
So every time you say something, it makes me want to say something more, which speaks to the importance of protecting the environment after five o'clock when people want to be out. It's a 27, if, uh, 24/7/365 experiential economy, right? People work at all different times of day and night or digitally connected in, in ways we never thought we would be. If my schedule permits, that I want to be out in a coffee shop at one o'clock in the morning in Mellon Square. Should be able to be out in a coffee shop at one o'clock in the morning in Mellon Square and feel every bit as safe as if it was one o'clock in the afternoon, you know? If I want to go to the O, which I absolutely love to do at one o'clock in the morning and I
That surprises me.
Oh, I love the O.
I thought you were more conscious about what you eat. I love it. The food's delicious. I'm not saying anything about the food.
But you know, but yeah, we want to know that, yeah, you can go to the O at one o'clock in the morning and it's okay. And you're going to be every bit as safe as if it was one o'clock in the afternoon.
Lisa and I have the hardest time with restaurants. I mean, we, we're late eaters. We eat at nine o'clock, nine 30. And most of the time they're like, oh, here they come. You know, we're stuck here for another hour. I tip well, so you know, I figure we'll make it worth our while. But, uh, restaurants in downtown and, and the surrounding areas just generally are not open very late in Pittsburgh unless, unless they're busy. It's their prerogative, I guess.
Yeah. But it's always a pleasure to have you guys. I genuinely enjoy doing this, uh, this hearing.
Thank you all of you and happy holidays.
Yeah, thank you.
It's here. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Georgia. Thanks, Jeremy. So I think I have to make a quick announcement before I can let you go. Uh, we will continue with our budget, uh, hearings, uh, tomorrow at, uh, 10 a.m. Of course, we have our regular standing committee meeting. Then beginning at 1:30 p.m. tomorrow, we continue with our budget hearings for the Department of Finance and Law, our Ethics Board, the Office of Management and Budget. Uh, and those will be chaired by Councilman Burgess. We will also do the Operating Budget Division, the Capital Budget Division, CDBG, uh, Division, Procurement Division and the Equipment Leasing Authority. Uh, all that to tune into for tomorrow. So, uh, with this, Councilman, I need a motion to recess until tomorrow at 1:30. Okay. And I second that.